I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Rule call, please.
Commissioner Moros.
Present.
Commissioner Pollak-Rood is absent. Commissioner Circo.
Present.
Commissioner Sotile.
Present.
And Commissioner Weiss.
Present.
Thank you. Welcome to the El Cajon Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is being livestreamed on the City of El Cajon website. Appeals of final decision of the Planning Commission made this evening must be filed in writing with the city clerk before 5:00 PM Monday, November 28th, 2022, and must include the payment of a filing fee. If you wish to speak on either a non-agenda item or agenda item tonight, please fill out the request to speak card located by the agenda and turn it into the secretary, who will call you up to speak when the agenda item comes up for public comment. We ask that you give us your name, spelling of your last name. Speakers are limited to three minutes. The display on the podium, as well as other monitors in the chamber, will show time counting down. At 30 seconds, the podium clock readout will turn red, signifying you have 30 seconds until the end of your time. Applicants and individuals representing groups of people may be allowed more time if appropriate. All public hearing comments should be addressed to me as the Chair of the Commission and not to individual commissioners or to staff members. Please turn off all electronic devices if you have not done so already. Pursuant to City Council Resolution Number 114-79, a commissioner who has received evidence related to a matter before the Planning Commission, other than an unescorted view of the subject property, is required to disclose such information. Okay, at this time, we will take comments from the member of public on any item of business within the jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. Under state law, no action can be taken on items brought forward under public comment, except to refer it to staff or administration or to place it on a future agenda. If there's anyone who wishes to address the commission under public comment, please come forward now.
Commissioner Moros, before you open the public comment, I believe Commissioner.
Come on down. Do you need some help?
On the record, Commissioner Rebecca Pollak-Rood is present at 7:05.
All right. Okay, there's no one that wants to come forward? Under public comment?
Yes, we have one speaker.
Okay, great. Feel free to come down. Give us your name, spelling of your last name.
Good evening, question. My name is Patrick Grillo. My last name is spelled G.R.I.L.L.O.T. I wanted to address the commission on the housing element that was recently approved by HCD and congratulate the city, I think, on that accomplishment and working cooperatively and collaboratively with HCD over the Housing Community Development Department of the state over a period of many months and iterations and back and forth with that. I know it's been a different process, I guess I'll say this time around, with a lot of that, a lot more teeth to that process with a lot of the new housing laws from the state. And many other jurisdictions have not taken the same approach that have come out of compliance with that, and there have been builder's remedies and other consequences to that. So I want to again congratulate the city and, to the extent the Planning Commission supports that as well, and encourage future continued cooperation with the state on shared goals of expanding housing availability, the housing stock generally, and also especially for low-income and very low-income individuals. And lastly, I'll just note that I thought it was a reasonable estimation of the very low and low-income housing to be allocated to ADUs. Some other cities in the state have said they're going to get all of their low-income housing from ADUs, and HCD shut that down, so I'm glad they didn't even pursue that, and that we're being realistic, but also taking the right steps forward aligned with the state goals and did not outright reject the RENA allocation either. So that's all I have to say about that. But again, I thank you and congratulate you on that and hope that it's a continued partnership with the state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else under public comment?
No more guest speakers.
Okay, great. Sounds good. All right, at this time, we will go to the consent calendar. And has everybody reviewed the meeting minutes? Okay. All right, well, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Valdez, seconded by Pollak-Rood. Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous votes.
Great. All right. We'll move to our first public hearing this evening. That is Agenda Item Number Two. It is project for off-sale alcohol sales at Parkway Plaza for the Aldi store, and the request is to amend Specific Plan Number 19 to expand opportunities for off-sale alcohol sales at Parkway Plaza. Staff?
Great. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. So again, this is a request to amend Specific Plan 19, or SP 19, and the purpose is to expand opportunities for off-sale alcohol sales at Parkway Plaza. So currently, Specific Plan 19 does not include any procedures related to off-sale alcohol sales, and as such, any proposed off-sale alcohol-related uses are just subject to the standard El Cajon Municipal Code sections, which really do include strict requirements related to the location and conditions of approval for new off-sale alcohol uses. So as you may recall, the Planning Commission did deny a request for Aldi at Parkway Plaza to add off-sale alcohol, and that was on October 4th, and that was due to the over-concentration of existing off-sale alcohol uses. So we were working on our presentation. We do have an aerial photograph of the subject site, which hopefully we'll be able to provide to you. But the boundaries for Specific Plan 19 are Pletcher Parkway to the north, and then North Johnson Avenue on the west, and then State Route 67 on the east, and then Interstate 8 to the south. So that's the boundary for Specific Plan 19. Large-scale alcohol outlets, large-scale businesses with off-sale alcohol sales at the mall only include Walmart currently. So that's the only off-sale alcohol outlet at the mall. There are other large-scale outlets in the vicinity. Those include Smart &amp; Final to the east, as well as Target, sorry, Target to the east, and then, as well as Food for Less to the east, and then Smart &amp; Final to the west. So staff really took to heart the comments from the Planning Commission at the October 4th meeting. We met with Aldi representatives after the meeting and really tried to take a thoughtful look at the general plan and other opportunities and options in order to meet the goals that they were trying to achieve. Looking at the general plan, we looked at Goal Nine, and that advocates for the creation and retention of a strong competitive region-wide commercial base. And then Objective 9.1 of the general plan states that Parkway Plaza will be maintained as the city's regional shopping center. And then lastly, we looked at Policy 1.1, and that further states that Parkway Plaza shall be expanded from its original size and that the number of major tenants and stores shall be increased. So looking at the overall mall, what we saw was that the off-sale alcohol not being allowed would be a constraint to the attraction of additional large-scale retail establishments. So someone like Aldi or a similar store wanting to come to the mall may decide that it's not the right location because of the restriction on off-sale alcohol uses. So in looking at the amendment, what is brought forward tonight is to amend Specific Plan 19 to allow general retail stores, grocery stores, or retail pharmacies with greater than 10,000 square feet of gross floor area and a maximum of 10% of gross floor area devoted to off-sale alcohol uses at Parkway Plaza. So any decision would be similar to the current procedure that's in the municipal code, so it would be a public convenience and necessity finding, but it would be based only on the operational standards of the business, as well as the recommendation from the police department. So there's still discretion proposed with this amendment so that the police department and staff can make sure, looking at the floor plan, the operational characteristics, whether or not there's security guards, any other additional measures that the police department would recommend would be incorporated into any approval. So the Specific Plan Amendment essentially sits on top of the zoning code, so it supersedes the regulations that apply citywide, and so it'd be a specific regulation only for Parkway Plaza. So in order to recommend a City Council approval, the Specific Plan does have to go to the City Council. The Planning Commission needs to find that the proposed Specific Plan Amendment serves the public interest and that it will implement the general plan. So draft findings are included, and they determine that the Specific Plan Amendment serves the public interest by providing convenient access to off-sale alcohol at a regional scale, and that the amendment will implement the general plan by attracting and retaining major tenants at Parkway Plaza. So staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the Specific Plan Amendment to the City Council, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for staff at this time?
Yes, I have one. It still would require that the establishment would have to be 10,000 square feet or larger?
Yes. So in looking at the general plan, it really talks about attracting larger tenants to the mall and retaining those tenants, and so the focus of the amendment that's brought forward is for those larger grocery and retail stores.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Just a comment that this is what I was hoping we'd be able to find. We don't want to have a large liquor store at Parkway Plaza, but allowing large retail stores with ancillary use, it helps the area, helps Parkway Plaza. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. No, I agree. And you know, we, I'm not sure if the applicant's going to come forward tonight, but you know, they had a great presentation last time. They showed us everything they do, how much floor space they use, where they position it, where the registers are located. I mean, they're very diligent, so I'm happy to see that happen as well. At this time, let's open up public hearing. Do you have any speaker cards?
We do. We have one speaker card.
Okay.
I'll keep it brief, I promise, Chairman. My name is Skip Janes. It's J.A.N. as in Nancy E.S. I'm with Aldi. Chairman, thanks for having us. Commissioners, we appreciate it. Staff, thanks for having us. Citizens of El Cajon, we're looking forward to opening the store here in the next few months, and we can't thank staff enough for coming up with a resolution to this for, I think it benefits both El Cajon and Aldi and the citizens of El Cajon. So as Chairman said, we gave you our presentation last time. We'll certainly answer any questions you might have, but we ask that you approve the amendment to the Specific Plan 19.
I do have one question. How's it going? Timeline?
Timeline?
Construction-wise, what do you plan on slinging your first watermelon?
Hopefully, as soon as we get this in our hand, we're going to open the door, so.
Is construction done?
It's probably looking at February, more than likely, because we've got to go to City Council next month and then the noticing period, you know, and then to get that actual license in our hands. So we're probably talking February.
How much more construction you got left onsite?
Not much. One of our biggest problems has been procurement materials right now, and for some reason, tile's a problem. So as soon as we get our sales floor tile in, they'll finish up the interior and we'll be good to go. All utilities are good. The city staff has been phenomenal, building department getting all inspections and everything, so we can't be more thankful for that, so we appreciate it.
Great. Any other questions for the applicant? Yes?
I just have one. I know last time there was discussion about moving a liquor license. Is that still? And I don't know if that question's for you, if I should have asked that for staff. Is that still the process that you'll be doing this time?
Unfortunately, we've been searching high and low for a license in the city of El Cajon, either Type 20 or Type 21, which is kind of out of our norm for 21. We would never use it, but there's still none available, so we'll be transferring one in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, well, great. Well, we look forward to starting to shop there.
Very good. Thank you, guys.
All right, no other speaker cards?
None.
Okay, I make a motion to close public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Moros, seconded by Commissioner Circo. Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns?
The staff did exactly what we were looking for. This sets Parkway Plaza, which is a large shopping center, unlike any strip mall or little corner store. This really sets it off as a regional area and allows for special development in the special plan, so this is exactly what we were looking for. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and forward-thinking, if we ever do any mixed use in Parkway Plaza, it'd be nice that they would have a store that was, you know, close enough to get to for groceries. All right, does anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to adopt the next resolutions in order recommending City Council approval of the proposed sequel exemption and to amend Specific Plan Number 19 to allow for off-sale alcohol sales subject to specific standards.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Commissioner Circo, seconded by Commissioner Pollak-Rood. Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
All right, we look forward to it. And thanks for working with us and staying patient, and we appreciate you going through the process. Okay.
Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, next on the.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just wanted to announce that the City Council hearing was joint notice with the Planning Commission hearing, and it is scheduled for December 13th.
Oh, great. That's fantastic. All right, Agenda Item Number Three, Neighborhood Healthcare General Plan Amendment. It is a request for a general plan amendment and zoning reclassification. Sequel recommendation, it is a negative declaration, and staff recommendation is to recommend City Council approval. Staff?
Good evening, Honorable Commissioners. My name is Mike Villione, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. The item before you again is a request for general plan amendment and zoning reclassification at 470 North Molson Avenue. The subject site is at the southwest corner of North Molson and East Madison Avenues. It's about 1.7 acres in size. It's got an existing 12,500-square-foot building, 121 parking spaces, and it's accessed from both North Molson and East Madison Avenues. The site is also open to and shares access with 855 East Madison, which is a parcel to the north where Neighborhood Healthcare currently operates, a medical clinic. So the general plan land use designation at 470 North Molson is medium-density residential, and it has a corresponding zone of RM 2200, which would typically permit multifamily residential and limited non-residential uses. The site was previously used as a church beginning in 1962 with conditional use permit number 116, and then in 2008, Specific Plan Number 513 was approved, which provides for 16 parking stalls on the property for the existing clinic. In 2020, after taking ownership of the property, Neighborhood Healthcare obtained a conditional use permit number 2020008 for a nonprofit service center devoted to assistance programs such as Medi-Cal enrollment, housing assistance, job counseling, training, and so forth. So ultimately, the applicant determined that the use of the site would best fit their needs as a medical clinic. So unfortunately, the RM 2200 zone doesn't permit medical uses. Therefore, they've requested and filed an application for the general plan amendment and zoning reclassification for a general plan land use designation of office non-retail and a corresponding zone of office professional, which would permit a medical clinic by right. The proposed medical clinic would not require further site development and would operate within the existing building. It wouldn't necessitate any additional access or parking needs. The parking demand for the service center and the proposed medical clinic are equivalent under the code. So essentially, it would extend the office non-retail designation and the corresponding office professional zone from the 855 Madison property from the northwest down across the property. The properties at the northern side of that intersection also share those same designations and zoning districts. There are single-family and multifamily land use designations and zones in the vicinity, but the general plan recognizes that areas devoted to office and non-retail businesses can be located in close proximity, provided their operations are compatible. Such restrictions are implemented into the zoning code as the office professional zone is limited to office-related uses and performance standards that are codified ensure that noise, property upkeep, odor, and other conditions wouldn't result in a nuisance. So in order to approve a request for a general plan amendment, the City Council would need to make certain findings. To paraphrase, the City Council must find that the city has complied with applicable sections of the California Government Code, that the proposed amendment is in the public interest, and that the amendment is consistent with the rest of the general plan. These findings can be made, applicable sections of the government code are observed and appropriate notices were given. The request is in the public interest in that it facilitates investment into the property and results in a commercial area, which is well-designed with interconnecting access located near major streets, consistent with general plan policies 9.4.13, 9-4.4, and 11-1.2. Lastly, the general plan remains internally consistent as the site was not identified for housing in the housing element, and it provides services in the underserved Bostonia environmental justice community. Similarly, to approve a zoning reclassification, the City Council must find that the zoning amendment is compatible with the general plan, consistent with any specific plan is in the general welfare, and that there is adequate capacity to meet the city's share of regional housing needs. These findings can be made based largely on the reasoning identified in the previous slide. It is worth noting, however, that Specific Plan Number 513 for the 16 shared. Parking stalls would be preserved as there is adequate parking available onsite. Full draft findings are provided in the agenda report. So in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, an initial study evaluated the potential environmental impacts of the proposed project and found that it could not have a significant effect on the environment. Consequently, a negative declaration was prepared. Staff therefore recommend that Planning Commission recommend City Council approval of the sequent negative declaration, general plan amendment, and zoning reclassification. This concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
One question.
Yeah.
You mentioned something about the northwest corner. I believe, wasn't there a proposed daycare center there at that corner? Sometime ago, I believe there was one, but I don't know if it's still there.
So at the northwest corner of the intersection, there is an existing daycare?
Daycare. There is one. Okay, got it. And the medical clinic would be all-service medical clinic? Do you know any particular, what the particular services would be?
The applicant is here and could speak to that, I believe, but I'm not aware of the specific types of services that would be offered beyond those that might normally be anticipated at a medical clinic.
I'll ask the applicant. Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right.
So I just have one quick question. So the building, it says, was built in 1962 that they'll be taking over. Just knowing how medical equipment and things need to be, is there any concern about bringing things up to code? Or that would only be in the event that they put forth and ask for any kind of building permits or anything for remodeling and things like that?
The applicant would be seeking and has actually already submitted for a building permit application to make those necessary interior improvements to the structure to make it suitable for their needs.
Great. Any other questions? Great. We have a speaker card?
Yes, we have two. First, we have Carl Higgins, and he has a group presentation. The CEO and the Director of Facilities is available for questions and answers.
Great.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Higgins, you said?
Yes, Carl Higgins, H.I.G.G.I.N.S.
Great, thank you.
Representing the applicant. With me also is Dr. Rakesh Patel, the CEO of Neighborhood Healthcare, and also Mr. Mike Villione, who is the Director of Facilities. Mr. Chairman, we're at your disposal to answer questions. I know there's been a couple that have been asked so far. At your request, we'd be happy to respond to those.
Sure, absolutely. Commissioner Sotile, was that you that had the question?
Healthcare clinic, what type of services will the healthcare clinic be providing?
Sure. So Neighborhood Healthcare provides care to low-income populations. We've been around for over 50 years. We've been in El Cajon actually since the late 90s. This used to be a building that was tied to the county public health, and then we've taken over that entire location back in the late 90s. The services we provide, so we take care of from babies to seniors. So we provide prenatal care. We provide care for the newborns, pediatric care. We provide behavioral health services, so mental health services, chiropractor services, acupuncture, podiatry as well, a little bit of ophthalmology as well. But really, it's primary care and general health is what I would say is the bulk of what we do.
Okay. Thank you.
How many doctors do you have at your clinic?
So we have a, I don't know the exact number of doctors. So our people that take care of us, we have psychiatrists, we have therapists, we have physicians. So I think we have about five physicians, but then we also use nurse practitioners, physician assistants. So altogether, probably 20 staff in different modalities.
Great, great. Any other questions?
You know I have to ask a question. I'm a nurse practitioner. Pediatric and family.
Fantastic.
So I was very excited to read the proposal, honestly, and to see the services. And even though I know that we're always concerned about housing, that this wasn't an area that was designated for housing, but if we increase our housing in the community, we need to increase access to care. Is your primary clientele or patients are, I'll say, like you said, from the low income, so Medi-Cal or uninsured?
Correct.
Patients? And I do believe I saw, I thought I saw somewhere that you were looking to have like OB-GYN, prenatal. I like the idea of the acupuncture and chiropractic, that you're looking for non-opioid options for pain management. So I think that that's great, and I didn't even know that those things were available to people that might be on Medi-Cal, so I think that's great. Do you also take Medicare at your site as well?
Yeah, we do. We take care of a lot of frail seniors out of Medicare Medi-Cal as well, so we do. And then we actually are a no-opiate practice, and so we don't really write narcotics for chronic pain. But we wanted to provide an alternative source of pain relief through chiropractor and acupuncture, as well as through behavioral health specialists.
And then, so my next question was on the mental health services. Is there also options for people that are looking for drug rehabilitation through your mental health, through a pathway there?
We do medication-assisted treatment as well, and so we have two addiction fellow specialists on staff, and we do a lot of virtual care now as well. So we have psychiatrists up in Escondido that are specialists that can work with our patients here in El Cajon.
Great. We're really thankful for you guys being here and providing those services. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Just a quick question. For the hours of operation, it's not like an urgent care, it's just like a nine-to-five type facility or?
Yeah, so it's a good question. So before the pandemic, we were eight-to-five Monday through Friday, and then Tuesdays, we did an eight-to-eight shift. And then actually Saturdays was an eight-to-12. With the pandemic things and staffing, we're kind of back to an eight-to-five for the most part, but we're continuing to look to see what the needs of the community. What we're finding is that when we open late, the patients actually don't want to come, so it's the eight-to-five seems to work the best.
But you're open on a Saturday, so for those.
Right now, we're not. Yeah, we probably will at some point, but right now, we're not.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Great. Any outpatient surgeries done in your...
What are you looking to get done now? We do, we do lumps and bumps, things like that, toenail removals, like ingrown toenails, things like that, but beyond that, not, not very complex sort of things, yeah.
Great, yes.
I did want to ask, is this going to shift the lines that I see in the mornings that form at the front of, right on the edge of Madison? Is that going to shift these people to the larger building and parking lot?
That's our goal. I hate those lines. It's kind of the bane of my existence, is lines. You know, my dream is to get rid of waiting rooms, that you just come and you go to your exam room. We've still got a ways to get there. The part of the problem is screening still.
Yeah.
Because we got to make sure people don't have COVID walking into the building, so there's a bit of process there. But really, what we learned during COVID was that our original clinic, we squashed a lot of people in there, and it's just not healthy for employees or for patients. And so by expanding into this space, you know, we'll have some organic growth, but really, now we've got elbow room, and our doctors will be happier, our patients will be happier, the experience will be better, because so much about healthcare is the experience you get when you walk into a building. And as you said, if you're standing in line outside for 15 minutes, that doesn't feel very good. So hopefully, that's our goal.
Okay, cool.
Great, excellent.
Impressed Ganey surveys are a real thing. I don't know if that's the survey company that you guys do.
We use a different company, but yes, yeah.
Great. Well, thank you, we appreciate you. All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you to staff, throw a bone to staff, they've been tremendous to work with.
Great.
Thank you.
You bet. That's what we like to hear. All right, any other speaker cards?
Yes, Patrick Grillo.
Okay.
Hello again, Commissioner. Again, Patrick Grillo, G.R.I.L.L.O.T. I should say, the first time, I'm a resident of El Cajon, and as is probably guessed, an advocate for lots of housing. But I do want to say I am supportive of this proposed amendment, because it's not identified as a site in the housing element, it doesn't reduce our planned housing growth for that. And also, I think it is a key growth area for providing more healthcare services and social services, especially to those low-income and underserved and historically oppressed communities in that area and lots of areas of the city. I do have a couple of questions, one, I guess, for staff, and one that maybe, I don't know if we want to have the applicant answer, or maybe separately. I was curious if some of those social programs that they have been doing or had been doing without this requested new use will be continuing, and how that may or may not be affected by the facility now being used for healthcare, so the sorts of, like, they'd been doing food drives and things, or handouts of things like that. And then for staff, I'm wondering if the new OP zoning, does that allow for any sort of housing in the future? I know it's primarily a commercial zone, but there's been lots of changes in state law around requiring the allowance of housing to be built in previously not allowed zones, like certain commercial, and I believe AB 2011 may have affected OP zoning that was passed this year, so I'm curious if staff could comment on that, or if there are things in the pipeline that they might be aware of at the state level. I can take my answer off the air, if that's... And I guess I don't have to answer, but yeah.
Sure. I should be able to speak to those things. So regarding the social services, there is an allowance in code for an accessory use of up to 15%. The OP zone wouldn't accommodate a standalone service center like the previous conditional use permit that they had in place, but they could offer services that you might anticipate a patient needing as a part of their navigation through the healthcare system, such as, you know, an ombudsman or something to that effect. So there are opportunities there, and I think that's anticipated in the use. Regarding housing at the subject site, the OP zone, I believe, allows for essentially a caretaker unit in its existing, the way it's codified now. We will, I think the next agenda item may speak to this as well, we are looking to make updates to the code, however, to better align it with state law, and so there are, you know, there may be additional opportunities for housing based on state law at that site.
Great.
Thank you, I appreciate the answers.
Any other speaker cards?
No.
All right, well, this time, I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
I second it.
Motion made by Commissioner Moreau, seconded by Commissioner Sotile, please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Great. All right, fellow commissioners, what say you?
I just have one comment.
Yeah.
As I am so fond of reading through negative declarations, I was quite amused to note the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians first requested to review the project and then declined to review the project, so. I like to find little bits of humor in a negative declaration. Oh, yeah, yeah. It's, it's, SEQA is one of those, I know the reason that they put it in code, but the state of California, like any government, is really bad at making streamlined, efficient things. And so transferring the site from neighborhood or residential to office professional, I don't see why it needs a SEQA statement that we're not, because we're not changing anything on the property. But it was still enlightening to read through and note that there are no endangered species on that piece of property.
Fellow commissioners.
Humans, are they endangered species?
Great.
I think it's a great improvement on that corner. I've seen that corner before, and I think it'll serve well, especially there's another healthcare clinic, kitty corner, not kitty corner, across the street, so I think it's a good project.
Yeah, great. All right, well, if there's no further deliberation, I'd like to go ahead and move to adopt the next resolution in order recommending city council approval of SEQA negative declaration
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Moreau, seconded by Commissioner Vaez, please
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
All right, and again, thank you for what you're doing in the community, we appreciate you guys very much.
And this one goes to the city council again on December 13th.
Yep. All right. Agenda item number four, it's time. The 2022 zoning code amendment, initiate zoning code amendments, it is SEQA exempt, and staff recommendation is approve. Noah?
Yes, thank you. So again, this is a request to initiate our annual omnibus update to the zoning code. This year, we're looking to focus on two primary areas, the first being economic development to support business retention and growth, and then, as Mr. DeLeon alluded to earlier, we're going to be doing quite a few housing element-related updates.
Great.
So on the economic development initiatives, we're looking at allowing for biotech office and research uses. We're also looking to accommodate electric vehicles through storage, sales, and delivery, because they operate somewhat differently than normal automobiles, and they have different characteristics that are necessary for their repair. And then also, we're looking at some minor updates, like to home-based businesses. Right now, we don't, in the home-based home occupation permit regulations, we don't allow piano teachers to have piano lessons from their homes, so we're trying to make some tweaks to accommodate that, just some common sense updates to the code. We also want to look at development agreements as an opportunity for economic development, so we'll bring that back as well. And then on the housing side of things, we're looking to make additional updates to our accessory dwelling unit ordinance based on new state laws. We're also looking at new objective design standards for residential development, so objective rather than subjective, so that everyone that comes through the door knows exactly what they need to do in order to get a project approved. We also need to make some updates to our density bonus law, and then we're adding sections to the code for urban lot splits as approved by the state. And then we also want to extend the emergency housing pilot program sunset date for the Amicus cabins out at Meridian Baptist. That's scheduled to end at the end of 2023. We want to push that out so that there's sufficient time to evaluate how the use is going before that ordinance sunsets. So with that, staff's recommendation is just that the planning commission adopt the proposed resolution to initiate that zoning code amendment. Thank you.
Great. Any questions or comments for staff?
I have one question, and it's on the electric vehicle storage. I know that you guys do a ton of research, you guys are awesome, you do cover everything, but I want to make sure we pay close attention to battery storage, because I don't know if, yeah, there's been several recent fires with electric batteries exploding. I'm not sure if they're overcharging, I'm sure there are many different issues, and I find it amusing to be talking about the dangers of electric vehicles. Electric vehicles have been around longer than gas vehicles, and originally, gas vehicles were met with the "you put what, and then you light it on fire"? Internal combustion engines are scary when you think about it. But as we look at the electrical vehicle storage and whatnot, make sure that we look into safety for those.
Understood.
I did have a question, just kind of in relation to that. So, you know, obviously, there'll be a lot of pressure on the grid over the next 20 years. I noticed El Cajon doesn't really suffer from any power failures. Is that mainly because of those peaker plants that we have, the STGNE plants over on Johnson? I see those on the hot days, they're both fired up, and they're running, I don't know how big they are, but I'm just curious if that's one of the reasons why we don't really suffer from any of the brownouts. Do you guys know anything about that?
I'm not, as it relates to recent rolling brownouts or blackouts, I'm not aware of anything that's been on a larger region-wide basis. I know that they have done some power outages for safety purposes in more rural East County, just because of the fire-related concerns. The peaker plants do augment the overall grid integrity, so that, you know, when there is peak demand and the solar panels aren't, and the solar panels aren't generating electricity, the peaker plants help to maintain the stability of the grid. But I don't think it's directly related to their proximity and placement in El Cajon as to why larger brownouts or other electrical service interruptions are occurring in San Diego County.
Yeah, because, I mean, we approved that one, was about seven, eight years ago, that second one they built out there. And it was just, it was a good idea, you know, I'm glad they did that, so.
I know why you get less blackouts.
Why?
Because of the hospital. On STGNE's grid, the El Cajon Valley Hospital still exists, and so there are three circuits that serve the east side of El Cajon that are labeled hospital. Half of the Shadow Mountain campus is on the hospital grid, and the other half is not. The half not on that grid gets blackouts from time to time. The half on the grid, we've never had a blackout.
Interesting. Well, that's interesting information, thank you.
I'd say one thing, just to add, kind of tagging on the electric vehicle storage and sales and things, where we look to put in even, or for businesses where they look to put in charging stations and things like that. I know that at the high schools, all the high schools have gone to electric buses. And I know specifically here, the one in El Cajon High, they, the electrical company that put them in, put in charging stations that are actually solar. So not only does the solar charge, you know, end up being what provides the electricity to charge the bus, but it also, you know, provides energy back on the grid. And I think, since, you know, we're moving to a lot of these things and concerns about the grid, wherever we can, we should be trying to, you know, ask or make accommodations for solar, you know, especially in the case where there's going to be anything with electric vehicles or charging stations. And that may be a requirement now from STGNE, I don't, that part I don't know. But it certainly then, like you said, takes out the whole issue of, you know, are we going to be pulling from people's homes and risk a collapse of everything, or a black, you know, brownout or blackout?
All right, anything else you want to? Or should we just tell staff to get working? All right, is there any speaker cards for this agenda?
Yes, we do have one speaker card.
You don't have to spell your name, we know it.
Surprise, yes. It was one or two of us, right? So I just had a couple of questions, I guess, I think they were answered a little bit during the staff presentation about the design standards, so I'm glad to hear that will be kind of followed again, that those will be objective standards as state law requires. I noted, kind of much of the architectural design standards currently in the code do not seem to me to be objective, and I guess that to me indicates that maybe that means they are subjective by nature. So I think that those things around, you know, that it must be not, I forget the exact phrasing, but things that are not jarring or things like that are not objective, so I hope the commission can, I'm sure staff will report out appropriate changes in that regard, and I think that helps. The reason I think that's important is that it gives clear guidance to builders, and anything where there's ambiguity, or there has to be back and forth with the building department, ultimately increases the cost to build, and then therefore, the cost to own or rent your housing to. So I think everything we do to streamline, reduce that, make it clear, that's the big picture. It's not all about like whether it's a sharp corner or a rounded corner on the building. And then also, I had a question that, about if the scope of the planned changes involves anything related to the deemed-approved hotels and the housing voucher program that the county has had, if staff is planning to include that in any zoning code updates, as I know council had, and planning commission had considered that and then tabled that indefinitely, so I'm curious to know if that's planned to be part of this upcoming code changes as well. And if it is, I would instead, I guess, urge the commission and the city generally to focus, to the extent it focuses on that program, focus on the public safety and any exceptions or crime that may happen as a part of that, as opposed to pursuing setting a cap on the percentage of rooms that could be occupied using a voucher or anything like that, that restricts use of the voucher without focusing on, or instead of focusing on problematic behavior that may be happening at the sites.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Staff, is there going to be anything on the zoning code omnibus in relation to the voucher program?
No, there will be no proposed changes to the deemed-approved lodging ordinance or anything related to vouchers. In regards to the other question that was brought forward about the objective design standards, we have been working with a committee of local designers and architects and engineers to provide feedback, so we've circulated that, and so we can share that, because it's publicly available. It's been some great work on it. It's including now some graphics, so that it's easier to understand kind of the design, because I know now, it's a lot of very detailed descriptive language, but some easily expressed concepts through a graphic, I think, go a long ways when it comes to the zoning code. So we will share that with the speaker, so that the speaker can take a look at it and give us some additional feedback as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, you bet. All right, any other speaker cards?
No.
All right, then I motion to close public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Moreau, seconded by Commissioner Circo, please vote. All right.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
All right, do we have a motion on agenda item number four?
I'll make it.
Okay.
Move to adopt the next resolution in order initiating an amendment to the El Cajon zoning code.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Commissioner Circo, seconded by, excuse me, Commissioner Sotile, seconded by Commissioner Circo, please vote. Okay. All right, and that does it for agenda items. Any staff communications or other items?
Yes, one staff communication. I'm proud to announce that the community development department has added our newest member, who's out in the audience, that is Sable Beltran. She is our junior planner, comes our way via the private nonprofit housing side, so she's getting up to speed on local municipal regulations and helping with building permits, and before not too long, you should be seeing her giving a presentation to the planning commission, so just happy to welcome Sable to the team.
Well, congratulations. Have you studied the big, thick book yet? No? Awesome, great. Anything for staff?
No.
Okay, thank you guys for all your hard work on ALDI, and appreciate that, that was great. Well, if there's nothing else, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Moreau, seconded by Commissioner Vaez, please
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Okay.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah.